All right, I'm going to call to order this meeting, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, on September 8th, 2021, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. And now we'll move on to department updates. And first, we have Ms. Penny Cottle from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Today, I'd like to report that our advisory status will stay in yellow. We're doing kind of a juggling act here. Our percentage of positives has creeped up a little bit. Our cases per hundred thousand came down a little bit, just enough to keep us at that 1.5 level, I believe, and in yellow. So we're hanging in there, but we still have a high level of community transmission with COVID-19. So we need to not let our guard down and continue our prevention practices, including vaccination. The Delta variant is still the most commonly reported strain among all the samples that are taken. So we are seeing predominantly Delta variant in our community by that surveillance. We are also seeing breakthrough cases in Monroe County and in Indiana, which is to be expected. We know that that happens. The percentage is still very low among people who are vaccinated. So please don't take breakthrough cases as information that vaccine is not working. It is working. It is keeping people better so that they have less severe illness. It's keeping more people out of the hospital. It is reducing deaths, and that's what vaccination is intended to do. So not getting infected is only a part of that equation. Vaccine, I wish I could say that our vaccination rates were high. We had hoped that we would be well over 60 or 70% by this time. We're just holding steady in those upper 50s. As of yesterday, 58.8% were fully vaccinated among the eligible. Last week, it was 58.5%. So that's a very small increase. We do continue to vaccinate people. We continue to offer vaccine and outreach opportunities. There are lots of options. There are over 18 routine places to be vaccinated in Monroe County. You can visit ourshot.in.gov to find a full list, including mobile clinics and pop-up clinics that may be occurring. Free rides are available, so don't let transportation keep you from getting that vaccine. In terms of schools, we are visiting schools to do our usual flu clinics. We do this most every year. This year, we are adding COVID-19 vaccine, the Pfizer vaccine for those who are eligible. Parents can complete their consent forms. People tell us every year that school clinics for vaccinations make it so much easier. They don't have to take off work in order to get their children in for the vaccination, and it just helps everybody all the way around. So we're happy to be visiting the schools. We would certainly encourage anybody who has students in school, a faculty member, a staff member who hasn't yet been vaccinated to please fill out that consent and get scheduled for that vaccination. We do continue to have Moderna Mondays. Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is also available at Miller Drive. We are going to be adding some additional days to Miller Drive, and probably some of those days will have Pfizer vaccine available. So we are still working on that. Questions? We keep getting questions about booster vaccine, booster doses, and they are still not approved. So they're not available yet. We are assessing our plans. Certainly, things have changed from last winter to now, and we can't move forward very far very quickly until we have directives about that. So once those are approved and we have directives in terms of what's available, how is it going to be distributed? What's the state plans for the state and local government, local health departments in terms of the rollout? So we are working on our plans, but we can't make a lot of hard decisions until we get that other information. I do know that the Department of Health at the state is planning to set up vaccine and testing sites throughout the state. We had a mobile site here, I believe it was last weekend, and it was drive-through, so you could get testing, you could get a vaccine, whichever was appropriate for you. And that's pretty easy to do in a drive-through setting because you're not mingling people who are sick with people who need vaccination. So those are the things in terms of vaccine and booster doses that is coming down the line. The Board of Health does meet later today. They meet at 3:00 PM to discuss the current health order and regulations. They have been meeting regularly to review those. The current regulations are set to expire at the end of this month, and the Board wanted to address that earlier rather than later. So they'll be discussing that, and I will have more to report on that on Friday. And I think that's it.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I'm afraid I don't. Just kind of disappointing news, in a way.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I've been hearing about this new Mew variant. Do you have anything to add on that?
I do not at this point. We did not have our normal call with the state. I know what I have seen is that it has been identified in every state, but so far, we have not, I've not seen it listed circulating here.
Thank you. We've just been lucky on that, I guess. Great. Thank you so much for the update. We really appreciate you and all the work of Board of Health and everybody on your staff. Keep everybody safe. Thank you. All right. Next, we'll turn to Allison Moore, Emergency Management. Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to start with providing you some numbers of those that received or took advantage of the Small Business Administrative Loans from the June 18th and 19th flood. We had 16 businesses that were able to qualify for the Small Business Administrative Loans and 52 homeowners that were able to work through that process. Many of those individuals and businesses worked alongside our office in order to help secure funding. So we're happy that those individuals were able to have successful loans and take advantage of that. We will have, because those homeowner loans have now closed, the Indiana Disaster Relief Funds will also close at that same timeframe, which was September 7th. So hopefully, by the time we come back together next week, I will have the numbers of how many people were able to qualify for the Indiana Disaster Relief Fund for some assistance on that June 18th and 19th flood. I would like to just report on that topic of the flood. There are still people that are working with Salvation Army, United Way, Red Cross. And I don't want to leave any of those organizations out, but we have a team that meets every week that is continuing to try to help get these individuals assistance and backup on their new normal feat, if you will. And so I just want to give a shout out to those agencies that have collaborated with our office to assist those that were in dire need during that storm. It is National Preparedness Month, and this week, we are discussing "To Be Informed." And so I'd like to share that we have a free service in Monroe County. It's the Monroe County Alert. It's an Everbridge company, and you can sign up for free to get any kind of a weather-related alerts. We also send out alerts about health and COVID topics as well. Other things that we do, if there's accidents and roads are closed that are busy highways and such, we always try to send messages out to individuals and tell them to avoid areas. So I would encourage you to take advantage of that. If you've not yet signed up for Monroe County Alert, you can do that on the county homepage. There's a megaphone icon, and you can click that, and it will walk you through how to get signed up. If you need to get signed up by phone, you can always contact our office at 812-349-2546, and we would be happy to assist you in setting up that for you to get that free service. So anyway, in regards to the national preparedness, we encourage you to make sure that you're always informed, and then, of course, to spread that word. So if you sign up, and then you get the alert, and you have an elderly neighbor or someone that you know may or may not need that information, we encourage you to share that information so that everyone can get to safety quick and to be the most prepared when disasters, of course, can strike. We did have a successful blood drive yesterday, or the day before. The day before. And it's full. We got every spot filled, and I know when we switched locations, I was a little concerned. I just thought, oh, gosh, I hope they're just as successful. But once again, Monroe County residents have stepped up. Every spot was filled. We do have our second drive of the month in September on the 10th. And so if there's just a couple spots left for that one, I have no doubt it will be a full drive as well. But if that's something you can take advantage of, please go to the redcross.org website and sign up for a spot, and we encourage you to continue to help us make those drives so successful. And then the last thing I'd like to report is just kudos to Kate Petroline, the Deputy Director for Monroe County. She actually submitted all of her paperwork yesterday so that she can hopefully qualify to be a State Emergency Manager. So there's different levels, and once she gets her state certification, then she can hopefully submit paperwork shortly after that in order for her to be a certified emergency manager. And it's a huge, long process. So I've been mentoring her, and this last year, she's been able to get that packet ready. And so it was submitted yesterday, and that is a huge, huge load off of her plate to get that submitted, and she's worked hard for that. So just want to let you guys know how hard she's worked on and getting that paperwork in and getting those certifications, and she'll just keep working up that ladder because she's amazing. So that's all.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, that's just great news about Kate, and I wish her the best as she continues on.
I agree.
Commissioner Giffens?
I love Kate's energy and enthusiasm, so this is a big step. Thank you for helping her in that manner.
Absolutely.
It's always good news. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. We always appreciate hearing from you and learning new things every week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Lisa Rich from the Highway Department. Ms. Rich? Maybe not. So maybe we'll backtrack back from her in a moment. I will note that Councilmember Cheryl Munson's on the agenda for this week, but she would like to come next week to talk with us, so we're going to postpone that one. And we have Jackie Nester-Gillen here to talk about the County Development Ordinance meeting tonight. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thanks for having me. So I would just like to give an update for tonight's meeting. As Commissioner Thomas mentioned, we're having an in-person outdoor meeting at the Danny Smith Shelter tonight at 6:00, and that's at 6800 East State Road, 45. We've had three previous meetings in person at shelters, and so we're hoping that this is a successful meeting as all of the others. If you go to our website, monroecdo.com, you'll be able to find all the information for tonight's meeting, as well as a draft zoning map for your review. We're going to have printouts of that draft zoning map, and staff helps you one-on-one to try to understand what your current zoning is, what the draft zoning is, and what your current list of permitting uses are. So it's a pretty productive meeting because you, again, get to meet one-on-one with staff, look at kind of the impacts to your particular property of interest, and also ask any questions about next steps and what this means for you. So we're hopeful that people can make it out tonight and happy to answer any questions or walk you through the website if you'd like. So thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Just highly recommend that people attend these meetings, find out what's going to be happening.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, it was very illuminating to attend one of the meetings last week. I was really impressed with how one-on-one information was offered to people and how the planning staff worked with people. Well done.
Yeah, and I know that it's been really helpful for staff, and it will be helpful for the Plan Commission. This is really, people are getting an opportunity to see a proposal before the Plan Commission even discusses it. So it's a great way to do things, and the folks who attended are really appreciative of the assistance and their ability to contribute very early on in this process. So thank you for arranging that. It's great to have it outdoors. It's going to be a nice night for it, so it'll be a good event. Thank you.
Yes, and just a reminder, please, if you are able to attend, you can give our office a call and give us a heads up, 812-349-2560. Masks will be required. And for anyone that's uncomfortable attending in person, we're going to have a Zoom meeting set up. Just check the monroecdo.com website for updates on that.
Great. Thank you. Great. Thank you so much. I'm glad you were able to come today. And let's see if there's any other department heads who have an update for us. I don't see any. So I don't see Ms. Rich either. So we will now move on to public comments. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on our agenda. The time limit is three minutes per person. At 2:30, you will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, that means you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comment. The same holds true for all of our regular agenda items, and there's also a countdown clock timer available on screen as well. So with that, we will begin public comments. It looks like we have Laurel Tannerberger. Good morning.
Can you hear me now?
We sure can. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Laurel Tannerberger, and our children, we have three of them, they attend Seven Oaks. And I understand that as part of the work session agenda, a determination may be made regarding the Seven Oaks Appeal concerning masks. So I had some things to speak about with you this morning. First of all, my educational background is in journalism and sociology. And from the beginning of the mask mandates, as a mother, as a full-time stay-at-home mother, and with my background, my concern was the psychoemotional consequences of having our children masked during their formative educational years. Because one of the things I studied in depth in college was something called the Critical Period of Development, which is also known as the Sensitive Period. It's the time in the postnatal life of an individual when the development and maturation of functional properties in the brain is strongly dependent on experience or environmental influences. And if sensory experience is abnormal or absent during these critical periods of development, it can have a profound effect on sensory representation in adulthood, and it can make it impossible for the individual to learn certain skills later in life.
I apologize. I don't mean to be rude, but I think it's important that I point out that in our hearing policy and in our guidelines, the commissioners, once an appeal is filed, the commissioners are not allowed to hear from parties other than in writing, and that writing has to be shared with the other parties. So in this case, the Seven Oaks would have to share that in writing with the commissioners and the Health Department at the same time. Again, I don't mean to be rude, but I think we've got to follow that process in order to make sure that, you know, as we move forward and the determination is made and the potential of a hearing, we don't cause any issues with rules of procedures and things like that. So I would request that, you know, go ahead and put this in writing, share it with the school, and then they can send it to the commissioners and the Department of Health so we can make sure those procedures are followed. Again, I don't want to curtail your giving the information. It's just there's a process we have to go through because an appeal has been filed.
Absolutely. On behalf of students with hearing deficits, speech delays, students who are on the spectrum, and young children who are, you know, in their formative years of life, I will do just that. I will write something up. I will give it to Seven Oaks and have them pass that on to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Cockrell, for that reminder. It's a new process for us. So folks who are here to comment on the Seven Oaks Appeal, please note that we cannot hear your comment today. Mr. Cockrell just outlined the appropriate manner in which to file your comments. Thank you, Ms. Tannerberger. Next, we have Mr. Shelton.
Good morning, Commissioner. Jim Shelton with the Chamber. Just want to give a heads up to the public that CASA will be having their fall training starting next month. It'll start October 18th. I know this is kind of far away, but it gives people who might be interested time to research it a bit. You can go to monroecountycasa.org and click on the Volunteers link. You'll find a Frequently Ask Questions page that has a lot of the details, or you can call 333-2272 and talk to a staff member. We do need more volunteers still to help deal with the children who are in the court system because their parents have abused or neglected them. And sadly, our director, Kristen Boucher, reported to the county council at their last meeting when she gave an update that we're seeing an increase in physical abuse of children, probably due to COVID and families being under extra stress, financial, as well as schools having been closed so long, et cetera. Maybe one parent no longer can work. So please think about that as a wonderful volunteer opportunity to really help children. You can make a big impact on these children's lives. So please think about that out there. Thank you all for letting me spread that word.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. We appreciate you. Next, we have Dr. Elliott. And again, a reminder, we cannot hear comments on the Seven Oaks Appeal. Dr. Elliott?
Sure, can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I have a comment on public health in general. I'm a professor of history, and I specialize in the study of pandemics, plagues, and their social and economic impacts in historical societies. I'm by no means an expert on COVID-19 or necessarily mitigation measures, although as a citizen of the county, I am nevertheless affected by them. And also, my son, Ruben, who is seven years old, has also been affected by the public health situation in the county, and I'd like to share a little bit about that. My son was diagnosed with social pragmatic communications disorder in 2019. What this means, for those of you who aren't familiar with this, is he does not automatically look at faces like you and I do. Even when he looks at faces, which he has to be sort of purposefully trained to do and to practice, he then does not automatically look for emotion in people's faces, and he does not see how people are forming their words either. This obviously has caused him some major social and communications delays. And this is despite the fact that Ruben is actually quite bright. He's reading a full grade above his level. For example, he shows incredible empathy and emotional intelligence. Before his diagnosis and therapy in 2019, he could not make friends. His speech was about two years behind his peers. His speech was actually incomprehensible to most people. He would not look at faces. He would not look at eyes when speaking with people, and this includes other children. So he then got diagnosed, which was very fortunate, in 2019, and we began working with him with a therapist, and his progress was incredible. I mean, just in six months of working with a therapist and a small group of children, and then obviously practicing these things on a consistent basis in his preschool, he made incredible progress, was making friends, learning to understand his teachers. He moved beyond parallel play, began to make major advances in speech. Last year, in school, when he and every other child and teacher were required to wear masks, his progress arrested completely. The school that he attends has now said that he shows more severe signs now of dyslexia in addition to social pragmatic communication disorder, and he is seeing a dramatically inverse, he is having an inverse impact as a disabled child. So I guess my question for you, regardless of the school that he attends and the policy of that school, I'm curious why your interpretation of public health in a public health order is not including the welfare of my child and thousands of like him in this country, in this county, who have dyslexia, social pragmatic communications disorder, and other disorders that require them to see other people's faces, not just his face being unmasked, but other people's faces? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elliott, and do recommend that you may want to share your comments with the Board of Health after meeting at 3:00 PM today. We do have Ms. Rich back online, so I'm going to take a moment and see if she wants to give us an update. There you are. Good morning. Technical difficulties.
Good morning. Out of all the Zoom meetings, that's the first time that's ever happened, but I'll keep it brief. I know you have a long agenda. Bridge 908, which is on Rogers Street, is scheduled to reopen back next week. We just ran a little bit delay on that. We didn't want to open it up to traffic and then close it down. And if we can keep the workers out there with the closed road doing any last curb and gutter and sidewalk work, then that keeps them a lot safer. Also, we're working on utilities at Smith Pike, Woodyard Road, and Curry Pike, so I would stay clear of that location due to the utility companies having delays there in that area. But if you have any questions about the department, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you so much for both of those updates. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Sorry, I've got a lot of noise in the background here. No, I'm just glad that the bridge on Rogers Street is reopening.
Yeah, it's good news. Thank you so much for getting back on and giving us that information. Let's see if there's any other public comment for items not on our agenda. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And I do not see any. So with that, we will move on to item five, please.
Move approval of the minutes for September 1st, 2021.
You are muted. Yeah.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
Yep.
Okay. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for September 1st, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable September 8th, 2021, and payroll September 10th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Mr. Miller joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for accounts payable was $989,912.63. The most notable claim was the amount of $194,092 for John Jones Chrysler Dodge Jeep for 2020 Dodge Durangos for our Sheriff's Department, followed by $178,631.09 for Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield for August claims and fees, and finally, $176,619.43 for E&amp;B paving, paving Lap Road, Leonard Springs Road South, and Hickory Springs Road. Total for payroll was $1,606,861.04, approximately 70%, or $1,133,397.04. Um, approximately 70% um, or $1,133,397.07 were for the main uh, direct cost, the main and supplemental payroll, and uh, the remaining $473,463.97 was for the indirect costs of payroll.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Uh, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
All right, excellent. Uh, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand um, at the bottom of the Zoom screen. And I do not see any. So with that, uh, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of claims docket, accounts payable, September 8th, 2021, and payroll, September 10th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much. I will note for the record that we have received a report from Waits and Measures. The report is dated July 16th to August 15th, 2021. And with that, we will move on to new business.
Move to approve IV Tech agreement for the nursing and practical nursing program in the correctional center.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Commander Crowe from jail joining us, and we also have Mr. Cockrell. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
If you don't mind, Sam, I'd like to just note that the packet did not include an amendment that we had made to the agreement. Uh, the amendment uh, is, puts in a new uh, item six, non-discrimination, and then it re-numbers the, the remaining of it appropriately, and that is the, it is agreed that the college and any of its, it's our standard non-discrimination uh, language that we see in all our contracts. Um, if you want me to read it, I can, but it, it seems pretty, pretty much we've, we've been using that language for a while and.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, so do we need a motion to amend um, the contract, or uh, should we just note that it is an amended contract when we make our final motion?
I think that you should just note that it's amended when you make your final motion.
Thank you so much. Uh, Commander Crowe, you want to tell us about it?
Yes, we're trying to um, set into works an, an agreement with IV Tech nursing students. So come to the correctional center for some of their um, practical work that they do um, with nursing. This is really a great program because it opens the door up to some of nursing students and gives them the opportunity to see what correctional healthcare is like. Um, there's always been a shortage of nurses for paid healthcare or correctional healthcare. Um, so doing something like this, I think, again, would open up that door and let people see what it's like and the opportunities that are out there uh, for the nursing students. Um, so I think it's a win-win situation for both us and for IV Tech. And I know there was concern with um, with, let me see, section three, number L. The students may require or may be required by the facility to sign a patient confidentiality statement. We've not amended this on the contract, but this is in that I have already addressed with our medical staff here. Um, so we will have the nursing, nursing students sign a um, confidentiality student, excuse me, statement uh, when they do their background checks uh, prior to them coming into the jail. So I hope that's satisfactory.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I agree that this is really a wonderful program for everyone involved in it. Um, and hopefully it'll contribute to better health among the people who are in the jail. Um, I did want to ask, the list of drugs that are, that they'll be tested for, I was curious because some of those are, are actually prescription drugs. And if someone tests positive for them but can show a prescription, then is that considered okay?
As far as I'm concerned, it is. And that's something more on IV Tech's is on our, our terms of the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Giffens?
I'm just really pleased that, that this kind of program is being put into place. I think it's a win-win, like Commander Crowe said.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, and we do appreciate it. I think this is a great idea. Um, and let's see if there's any public comment on this. I do not see any. So with that, uh, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the amended IV Tech agreement for nursing, practical nursing program in the correctional center?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the day.
You too. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-48, Transfer of Bond Anticipation Notes or Ban Proceeds. Fund name, 2017 Airport Ban and 2017 Airport Ban Debt. Fund number, 4809 and 4609, in the amount of $25,567.33.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and we have a second. Uh, Mr. Cockrell, will you please tell us all about it?
I will. This is essentially a housekeeping item. Um, about five years ago, we issued some a bond anticipation note to, to purchase some property around the airport. Uh, we issued it for slightly more than what was required to complete the project, which is buying the property. And so this is just transferring that money from the construction account, the constructed, the, the purchase funds to the debt payment fund so that we can use that um, now that it's that ban timeframe's uh, ended, and I think we're, the council, we're going to request a council for appropriation to pay off the, the debt out of the rainy day fund. And this, these funds should be used to pay that debt off as well, and that's what we're doing here.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
It's just always great to pay off debt.
Commissioner Giffens?
Agreed. Yeah, uh, it sounds like it's just a kind of moving electrons around at this point.
Yeah. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. And seeing none, um, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2021-48?
Uh, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Resolution 2021-42, Park Surplus Property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Whitmer. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, the park board is requesting that the commissioner surplus our 2014 SCAG mower. And that's all we're asking.
All right, uh, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I guess I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, the, the picture you included in the packet, uh, it looks like that thing is just in pieces already, so.
Well, it does not move at all.
Yeah, that makes sense. Let's see if there's any public comment on this uh, item. Raise your hand in the Zoom screen. I do not see any hands raised. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2021-42?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. All right, uh, next item, please.
Move to approve Oser Surveying and Mapping LLC Training Services Agreement. Fund name, Surveyor's Corner Perpetuation. Fund number, 1202-31009-0000, in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have a surveyor, Tron and Wright Randolph. Uh, he's in the attendees list. If he could be moved over to panelist, that would be great. Thank you, TSD.
Sorry, one moment, please.
Thank you. There he is. Tron and Wright Randolph, our surveyor. Good morning.
Good, good morning. Uh, nice to be here. Let me turn on my camera. Um, morning, uh, Commissioners. I guess I'll see you a little bit later today to our stormwater board meeting. Um, but um, I'll just jump in. I'm coming to request um, some services from Oser Surveying and Mapping. Uh, this will help uh, some training initiatives within the office. Uh, Ms. Oser was our professional surveyor here at the surveyor's office for three and a half years. Uh, she had uh, left the county and started her own practice, so this will allow us to use that professional uh, training. Um, honestly, there are other services kind of across the state that will help uh, us uh, learn some of our uh, specialized equipment. Uh, those costs are quite exor, exorbitant, and so this is such a great deal, and I think we're getting such a great deal due to the fact of our uh, previous relationship and that she had helped uh, streamline some of our operations here in this office um, while we had her as our PS. Um, fortunately enough, we had her as our PS for three and a half years. So um, that's kind of the gist of this. Um, and I hope to gain your support. We put the not to exceed on there. Um, and I think we'll actually kind of come up a little bit under, uh, this is coming out of our corner fund, so it won't have any impact on the county general. And um, we've already uh, been able to block out some dates if we get your approval today to actually start the training next week. And if you're following the surveying industry, it's really hard to get um, any uh, professional surveyor uh, to kind of assist you um, in a timely manner. They've been inundated with work. Um, so uh, again, I think this is due to the relationship that we have built over time, and uh, I hope to gain your support today.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Well, it certainly is very difficult to get a professional surveyor right now. Um, I've been wrestling with that myself. I did want to ask, when, when did Ms. Oser leave the county employment?
Right, kind of at the beginning of uh, 2020. So um, and then at that time, uh, it was really difficult to start rehiring that position. Um, there was um, some a hiring freeze put in place, but not saying that we weren't able to maybe have a special, you know, uh, exemption from that freeze. But um, at that time, the profession just became inundated and um, the demand uh, for professional say, surveyors increased. So even a few applicants that I got um, immediately uh, pulled their uh, application for the position because they were just happy with staying in the private sector. So 2020, so we haven't had a professional surveyor um, in the office since then, so this is really going to allow us to kind of uh, continue to move forward um, with the standards that we have set. And um, yeah, I'm just super thrilled that uh, we can even uh, entertain this and kind of get that help immediately. So I guess that was a larger answer than what you were asking, but.
Well, I was curious. I, I know that a professional surveyor has to sign off on any of the um, corners that are identified, or at least that's my impression. And I was wondering what you have been doing in the meantime.
Well, prior to my administration in uh, 97, uh, the commissioners uh, approved a surveyor review board, and we still have the surveyor review board. So the additional stamp on the section corners we approved with our professional surveyor is just um, certifying those, but the board still approves them as official monument record. So it, it just really enhances um, the, you know, the credibility of the process that, that is being done with these uh, documents by having a, a, a professional surveyor seal on them. Um, currently, uh, we went into a preservation approach since we weren't able to get a professional surveyor, which is as needed. So we're going out there and preserving stones, and we still have the equipment. Um, so we can collect GED control, but we can't certify that. So we kind of keep all that internal, and if surveyors reach out to us, we can then provide that information and they can use it. So if a monument's obliterated, um, you know, this raw data that we have in the office could really help another professional surveyor determine where they're going to hold that monument, which my hopes is to prevent and mitigate any uh, you know, um, disagreement or uh, that uh, you know, the landowners have. It, it's a very complex uh, profession um, that intertwines both my statutory requirements and their professional uh, responsibility. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Giffens? Uh, you're muted.
Sorry. Um, yeah, I, not at this time. Thanks.
Okay, so is, are these new tasks or new equipment that you're getting training on, or?
It's, it's the same equipment. Um, we uh, had a surveyor technician um, in the office that um, we just rehired that position. So um, our hopes was to do some cross-training. Um, they moved back into a field position, a field assistant position um, as an hourly position and then kind of left the county. Um, so we weren't able to successfully get that cross-training done. And so this will just allow us to do that. So we have all the equipment. This just will allow us to get back out there on the field and get the job done that we were getting done. Um, when I took the leadership role, you know, I, I, I'm not necessarily as i- involved with operating the equipment since we hired personnel to do that. So I will be um, accompanying uh, our new technician and Ms. Oser through these training processes. Um, just so we can kind of really just get out there and start using our Jevod system and uh, start kind of producing these documents as we did previously. And my goal is to aggressively try to hire a professional surveyor in 2022, but that might take some support from the Commissioner's office, um, and definitely will take a lot of support from the Council's office um, to get adequate pay to bring in a professional surveyor. Um, I will be coming to you at a work session here in the future to talk about my goals there and what I'm going to do in the meantime. Um, as far as um, moving forward, other professional agreements for perpetuation work, not for training purposes. I don't want to really couple both of those. I'm trying to keep them separate, but um, I'll be coming to you to discuss kind of my goals um, here in the near future at a work session.
Thank you. Um, let's see if there's any public comments on uh, this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. All right, seeing none, um, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Oser Surveying Mapping LLC Training Services Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve ratification of an agreement between Monroe County Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission and Flow Motion Events LLC. Fund name, donations, fund number, 4112-33017-0000, in, in the amount of $250.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Purdy.
Yes, good morning. Um, this is just uh, requesting that your ratification of an agreement that was um, entered into by um, our Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission and Flow Motion Events. I believe it was the Hut Sucker Passay, the um, hula hoopers um, that were present for the Paint the Town Purple event. And um, this money will actually be reimbursed to um, the Substance Abuse Commission uh, the Substance Abuse Commission from the IU Foundation. So just wanted to make sure that this was all appropriate with you guys. And I also wanted to add, my staff here commented about how well the people who attended the Paint the Town Purple and the people who supported the Paint the Town Purple event left our courthouse lawn. Our staff said that, you know, it was fabulous. They said everybody was helping to clean up, putting bags next to trash cans. And they spoke very well of everybody who was involved in this event. I just wanted to share that with you.
Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, it certainly was a very pleasant event. And I must say, I thoroughly enjoyed the hula hooping. Almost inspired me to see if I can acquire one myself, which could be very interesting.
I have images of you, Commissioner Jones, as part of the Hutsucker Posse out there, you know? It was a fabulous, fabulous event. And I want to thank the people at the courthouse for putting up their recovery flag, for having everything. They were just fabulous to work with as well. And I have to tell you, at the end of the evening, I was still there. Lots of happy people out that evening. And people were literally picking up single little pieces of paper on the ground. So I think it was cleaner when we left than it was before we got there. It was just, it was amazing how many people just said, no, let's get this done. And they did it right. So, but it was a joyous event.
It was. It was a great, it was a great celebration. Really, really good event. And thank you to our Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission, Commissioner Giffens, thank you. And I know Kathy Hewitt was there from the Health Department. Just so many amazing people giving their time and energy to this really important cause to celebrate recovery. So excellent work. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. All right, seeing none. Mr. Popper, will you please call the role on ratifying the agreement between Monroe County Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission and Flow Motion Events?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion approved, three to zero.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And our next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-35 to amend speed limit ordinance 86-09 and yield ordinance 86-12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Ridge here to tell us all about it.
Good morning again. So these items, we were brought to our traffic commission board in August. It was approved unanimously. It also is warranted with our MUTCD, Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's to amend ordinance 86-09 by the deletion of the speed limit of 30 mile per hour on Sugar Road. But the addition in 86-09 for the speed limit to be 20 mile per hour in Sugar Lane. So we're just lowering that that dead end road by 10 mile per hour speed limit. And then amend ordinance 86-12 by the addition of a yield sign at Ingram Road West for Hilton Road.
Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I just really appreciate how you're always looking out for the public safety. Thank you, Ms. Ridge.
Right, no questions here. And thank you for bringing this to us and thanks to the traffic commission. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. And I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Popper, will you please call the role on the ordinance 2021-35?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. And move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve Hitchcock Design Group Agreement Amendment Number One. Fund name, 2019 G O Bond. Fund number 4612 in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Please tell us all about this, Ms. Ridge.
Yes, this, we had a reach, had, we have an agreement with Hitchcock Design Group. It's basically for the roundabouts at Rogers Street and Gordon Pike, and then the future one at Bachelor Drive in Gordon Pike as part of our Fullerton Pike Reconstruction Project. Task two of this consists of preparing the construction and bid documents and provide bidding and construction-based services. The additional expenses for task two is $29,300. And then with the possible expense of reimbursable expenses of 700. There is a detailed scope attached to the contract for the services that will be under this task order. And we're excited to move to the next step to getting this, the landscaping under construction at this first roundabout phase. On the second roundabout, that'll be built into Fullerton Pike Phase Three costs also for that.
Great. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I just, I'm very excited about the design for this. I think it's going to be very attractive. And and I think the neighborhoods around there really appreciate the effort put into this.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, my husband and I went walking on the Limestone Greenway Trail a couple of days ago, and we drove down Rogers to go there. And that roundabout really could use some facelift, I guess is the way to say. But I look forward to this. And I also want to thank the neighbors there. They put a lot of time and energy into coming up with a very thoughtful and I think very Monroe County kind of design to this. So I look forward to seeing the final, final project here.
Yeah, and that and that is a great point. There are a number of folks who attended meetings to work with the design group and to come up with what they thought fit their neighborhood best. And I thought it was a really great collaboration between Monroe County Government and the neighborhood where, you know, they're going to see this every day. And so it's important to make sure that we get it right. I would invite you, Ms. Ridge, if you would bring some of the sketches maybe to the meeting next week, if you think of it, or at some point in the future during department updates. I think the public will want to see it as well. I think they did a great job on that, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I can do that as part of the update. Yeah, the neighbors have been great. I know you can't incorporate everybody's ideas because you have 10 to 15 people with ideas, but I think everybody came together and came up with a good idea and what they want incorporated. We've already reached out to a couple of the local limestone companies, and they're excited to be a part of the, a part of this project. So and actually, I think the commissioners, because you guys are actually the ones that put this beautification committee together, suggested it a couple of years ago, and then COVID hit. So, yeah, it's been a great collaboration with all parties. So looking forward to see the outcome of it.
Yeah, it's going to be beautiful. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I do not see any. And so with that, Mr. Popper, will you please call the role on the Hitchcock Design Group Agreement Amendment Number One?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Approved, three to zero.
Great, thank you so much. And we don't have any appointments today. We have a few announcements. Just a reminder to folks in the community who live outside the city but are targeted for annexation, that we have a lot of information on our website. It's co.munro.in.us. In addition, we worked with the county council to provide a township assistance fund and make sure that it continued. It will continue through the end of the governor's emergency order. If you need help with things like rent utilities and other necessities, please contact your township trustee. And they can help you. They also have other resources as well. So we encourage folks to reach out to their township trustee that every, every county resident lives in the township, whether you live in the city, a town, or neither. Also, we are accepting applications for boards and commissions, including the really important redistricting committee that we worked through last week at our meeting, the Economic Development Commission, and a number of others. But if you're interested in any, in serving on any of our boards or commissions, please go to co.munro.in.us and you can find the application through the search bar. Also, just a reminder that tonight, the county development ordinance discussion will continue at Danny Smith Shelter, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at 6800 East State Road 45. Again, that's tonight. This is really focused on a proposed zoning map and zoning changes. And residents are invited to come out. You don't have to live in that part of the county. They have maps for the entire county available. My colleagues, have anything else they wish to add?
No.
Okay, so shall we come back at 11:15 for our work session? Perfect, thank you, T S D. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And we appreciate everyone for joining us today. We will be convening our work session at 11:15. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.